No. Call the order, call the order. Let's begin with our three items. We have a pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Harris, a salute to the New Mexico flag led by Counselor Abeta, and an invocation led by Counselor Romero-Worth. If we could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose name the hymn is sung. I pledge the flag that was taken in New Mexico, and that is the symbol of our friendship among the United States of America.
Let's bow our heads. I'd like to reflect on the privilege and honor we have in serving the people of Santa Fe in these positions for which we were elected. Let's also reflect on the duty and responsibility we have been granted, and let's use our best judgment based on our experience and facts as we listen to each other to make decisions for our community. I'd also ask that we share any people we wish to be thinking about tonight, and I would like to start with my father, who has taken a turn for the worst in the last 12 to 24 hours. So appreciate your thoughts. Thank you.
Had a fair amount of contact with Jill in the last year or so, and I would echo Counselor Harris that she left us way, way too early, and she was a woman with many, many, many gifts, inspired many, and we're going to deeply miss her. Thank you.
Thank you. Just also wanted to recognize or honor Jennifer Riordan that had passed away in the plane accident, and those of us that work in the philanthropic sector knew her to be very strong in looking out for our communities and being able to touch everyone's lives just through the work she did. Thank you.
In addition to Jill Benjamin, who was a great member of our Realtor community, I would also like to remember Don Holman and Dennis Branch, who were very active in our Realtor community. Thank you.
Clerk, could you please call the roll, please?
Mayor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Abeta.
Here.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris, thank you. Counselor Ives, excused, thank you. Counselor Lindell.
Here.
Counselor Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Counselor.
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Villarreal. Thank you. You do have a quorum present, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can we have an approval of the agenda, please? This is a... Staff have any changes? Apologies.
Mr. Mayor, no changes.
In which case, we can now have a vote to approve the agenda? All those in favor?
Motion to approve.
We're doing business here a little differently. We're avoiding motions and seconds, just having votes. Too much time spent in budget hearings.
Yes.
We have a motion. We have a second. Can we have a vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Consent calendar.
H, J, and M. M as in Mary.
H, J, and M as in Mary. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to co-sponsor N as in Nancy, and that's all.
Okay. Co-sponsor? Yes, sir.
Well, I have a quick question on that.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Move for approval is amended.
Second.
All right. That requires a roll call vote, according to my notes.
That's correct. Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
All right. We move on to approval of minutes. Are there... Yes. Counselor Vihil Koppler. Well, we'll go from... We'll work our way toward...
Okay. Thank you. I'm not sure if Counselor Villarreal was going to bring it up, but she was...
I voted.
Yeah. She voted on everything, even though she was excused from the meeting.
Congratulations.
And then two more items. On page 16 of the minutes, I just want to make a correction. I'll give you time to get there. There were comments I made, and I just... Let's see, top of the page, third paragraph where it starts with "at the Public Utilities Committee meeting." Halfway down that paragraph, it says, "In the short term that I've been here, less than $400 has come to us for approval." That should read $400,000, if you would. And then, secondly, if you move to pages 26 and 27, I think this is proof of the mayor's earlier comment that we vote without motions. We do have missing people moving on those motions on page 26 and 27. At the bottom of the page where it says "motion," and I know sometimes it's difficult for the recorder to hear, so maybe we could be a little more careful. And so we have that on page 26 and on... As well as on page 27. So I don't know how we correct that, but having been at District Court, I mean, this would never fly. So I'm not sure what advice... What can be done about that?
Good spotting. I guess we'll just have to move a little more slowly so that we can actually be clear about which counselor is making the motion and which counselor is seconding the motion, but you're right, at the moment, I don't know how we could recapture that unless there's a... The city clerk has a suggestion.
Mayor, if I could, if anyone remembers who actually made the motion and seconded it, we can go ahead and amend the minutes now. If not, I can have the stenographer go back and listen to the recording, and then we can bring these minutes back to you at the next meeting. So, yeah, you can stay... You know, don't do your approval today, and we can bring them back to the next meeting with those corrections.
Is that acceptable?
So we will post... The motion will be to postpone them to the next meeting.
Any other corrections? Yes, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, as Councilwoman Vihil Koppler pointed out, I did vote, even though I wasn't... I was excused, so just to catch that. And then also, just to maybe check the word "counselor," counselor as in S-E-L-O-R. It's spelled that way is probably the autocorrect, but, you know, as... Although we serve as... Sometimes as guidance counselors, just to make that correction, and that's it. And I move to approve with... Oh, move to postpone until we get corrections. Thank you.
Is there a second?
That can be a voice vote.
That's a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? Measure carries. So now we move on to the items that were removed from the consent calendar.
Correct. The first one is item 10H.
And Counselor Harris, I think that's... No?
Counselor Rivera.
I apologize. Counselor Rivera, you asked for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, we talked about this on one of the other meetings that I was in, and I had asked you to initiate some discussion with the public schools about in-kind services, about keeping the schools open during the summer with regards to their recreational fields and their playgrounds so that the public would have access to them during the summer times. Did you get a chance to ask about that or look into that?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, yes, I did. They said they'd be amenable to discuss that, although they did not want to include it in this MOU with regards to the crossguards.
Well, that's fine, just knowing that they're open to some kind of discussion about maybe doing that, that would be great. Other than that, that's all I had. So what are the... Were there steps outlined about... Or going forward from here about when we might meet to talk about that, or?
So what I can do is determine who from the city would be the appropriate point person and put them in contact with San Antonio Public Schools. I believe it may be Parks and Rec.
And maybe some discussion with the mayor as well, because I believe there's some discussion going on already, or maybe with the city manager, but just so that we can hopefully have an answer before summer gets here.
Okay.
Thank you, John. With that, I'll move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. We need a roll call for this.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Abeta.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
And now, I was a little ahead of myself. Counselor Harris, I think item aye is yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Ask Mr. O'Reilly to come on up, and this is his domain.
By way of introduction, I just want to say on the 16th was the last Finance Committee meeting, and this item was on the agenda. One of the things I had brought up previously, and Mr. O'Reilly looked into it, and that's the issue of liquor liability coverage. You know, so here we are, we're leasing space, in this case, in Borough Alley, in public space, and our standard language really did not require that the vendor, whomever it may be, would be required to have liquor liability coverage. So Mr. O'Reilly did present some draft language, which I thought was acceptable. I don't see it in our packet here, in our agenda packet, and I don't see the hard copy. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to hear what you told us at Finance Committee about what we're going to do, and also going back and looking at various leases where we may have exposure that... Without the coverage we really need. So please, Mr. O'Reilly.
Yes, sir. Mayor, councilors, at... As Counselor Harris stated, we did look into this following the Public Works Committee meeting, and we checked in with RISK. The... What the response we got from RISK was that we generally require a certain level of commercial general liability insurance, and the response from RISK was that sometimes that those policies will cover things like alcohol operations, and sometimes they won't. And so RISK's recommendation was that we add some language to require not only commercial general liability insurance, but also liquor liability insurance when we do something like this where there's going to be liquor served. So we did make those changes, suggest those changes. We presented them at the Finance Committee. They were put into the record. I'm sorry they didn't appear in the packet, but they were handed to the recorder, and they were put into the record. So the current leases would be approved with that new language in it. Also, at those same... At that Finance Committee meeting, Counselor Rivera asked if we would check into the other... Our other tenants who happened to have leasing our property where they're serving alcohol. We have three of those. We checked in with all of them. They all, as we suspected, already had liquor liability insurance, and they're sending us their liability... Their certificates of insurance. We also, at Counselor Rivera's request, checked in with the applicant in this particular case in Borough Alley. They have liquor liability insurance, and they will be able to provide it to us before we sign the lease.
And as you did your research, one thing that you found out, that you relayed to the Finance Committee, is that state law or regulations doesn't necessarily require it, not necessarily on public property, but just as a... In the business. Is that correct?
Mayor, councilors, that was relayed to me by Barb Boltrek, our Risk Management staff, and apparently that is the case. I did not research it myself.
Okay.
But apparently that is the... That's the way the law works in New Mexico. If that's not true, I'm happy to be corrected. But I will say that where tenants are in buildings, and those tenants are serving alcohol, almost certainly the landlords of those buildings are not going to sign leases for alcohol use without the tenant giving them those kinds of liquor liability protections. In this case, the Borough Alley situation, we have a tenant inside the building on Borough Alley, so that landlord is requiring that insurance of their tenant, because their tenant is also going to use part of our land, Borough Alley. They already had the insurance, so it worked out.
Okay. Very good. With that, I'll move to approve, Mayor. Second. Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion?
Just real quick. Alonda, can we... So Mr. O'Reilly answered the questions I had for J, which was similar to aye. Can we approve together, or do we have to do them separately?
We'll have to do them separately.
Okay. So can we have a vote?
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Abeta.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
And Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion has been approved.
We then move to item J, which you referred to earlier.
Sorry for delaying the meeting by 30 seconds. Move to approve.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any further discussion? Can we call the roll?
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Abeta.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Okay. And then we move to item M.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Profideo, how are you?
Doing well, Counselor. Thank you.
Good. Can you give us just a quick status update, and since we're... It looks like we're going to be doing this for the next few months, just let us know if we're still ready to proceed.
Yes, so this is regarding fire restrictions within the city, and those are based on the expected drought conditions, or in current drought conditions, and those expected increasing of those drought conditions. So currently, we're in extreme drought in most of the state, including Santa Fe, moving on towards exceptional drought, probably in sometime mid-June or so, depending on how things go, if we don't get any significant relief with weather. All the indicators and outlooks that I've been reviewing have posted that above-normal than average fire season for the next two months. The one promising thing I have seen is that there is scheduled a robust monsoon, and it should be on time, or maybe even a few days early, and that's typically here in Santa Fe is July 7.
Very good. So your recommendation is that we proceed with this?
Yes, I would recommend to approve this with... Knowing these are 30-day... It's a 30-day statute, so that this will probably come up again in May and once again in June.
All right. And we'll just go over quickly what it means for the public.
So it restricts the sale of... Well, it restricts the use of specific fireworks, meaning aerial devices that go, you know, above a certain height, specifically Roman candles, shells, stick-type rockets, those types of fireworks, as well as it... As well as any open burning, including campfires or even barbecue pits at parks, burning of any weeds, trash, or vegetation, using charcoal barbecue grills in public parks and recreation areas, smoking in public parks, recreation areas, or any public trail, and using motorized terrain vehicles off-road.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll move for approval.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there a discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Romero-Worth.
Yes.
Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal.
Yes.
Counselor Abeta.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Lindell.
Yes.
Counselor Rivera.
Yes.
Mayor Weber.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 11 on the agenda is an equity pay proposal information. Michelle Gutierrez and Tom Diaz, please give us your presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members and staff. I'm Michelle Gutierrez, President of Local Ask Me 3999. We are here this evening to present our proposal as stated in the new contract about the monies that were initially appropriated for the equity pay proposal by our previous city manager. As our contract states, if no plan was presented to Local 3999, then our union had the opportunity to present our plan. Tom Diaz is our current chief negotiator and board member, and will present the plan in detail. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Tom Diaz. I'm a member of the Ask Me Local 3999 Executive Board. I presented information about this plan to the Finance Committee on Monday, and I'm pleased to present our equity pay proposal this evening to the full council. In your packet are a description of the proposal and the Excel sheets that spell out the details. We're asking for a council vote on this proposal at an upcoming meeting. We're making our proposal openly, and according to the rules in the current collective bargaining agreement, which designated funds for this purpose in fiscal 2018, and provides for us to make our proposal directly to you, the governing body, for your approval. Within this informational item, I hope to hear your questions and prepare to give you the details that will win your support in an upcoming vote. The main purpose of this proposal is fairness. Equity pay doesn't preclude any other reforms of compensation that might be proposed or contemplated by city management or by the union. It is more than just a gesture toward fairness, though. Ask Me represents almost 800 of your workers, and that number includes the people who cut the lawns, manage the computer network, keep the buildings clean, write computer programs, drive the buses, and manage our community art gallery, among others. As diverse as we are, the raises will make a big difference to hundreds of employees of the city. If you currently make less than $14 an hour, like 28% of our members, you'll get a raise of over $900 in this fiscal year. If you make between $14 and $16.30, like another 23% of the members, you will get a raise of over $700. 14% of our members make between $16.30 and $19 an hour, they would receive amounts from $520 on up in this fiscal year. There's a diagram in your packet, looks like this, to show the sliding scale of the The effect of those increases is to level out for 2/3 of our members who make less than $19 an hour, so that all of them get a raise of about $2,000 by July 1, 2019, which is the last committed increase in our current bargaining agreement. At $19 an hour and above, where 1/3 of our employees are paid, the 2% annual increases that are already committed in the contract dominate the numbers, and so those higher-paid people benefit more from the two coming 2% increases than they do from equity pay. By the end of our collective bargaining agreement, which goes through fiscal 2020, equity pay means that all employees covered by our union would make at least $13.07 an hour, which translates into about $27,000 a year. The proposal is fiscally prudent. I submit, in the current fiscal year for which we ask your support tonight, this is a way for the government to take a big step toward fair compensation without having to raise or find money somewhere, because the funds are already in the fiscal 2018 budget. The plan also creates a better basis for future reform. Managers, when we talk about compensation reform, are almost undoubtedly going to focus on positions management, fields are the most competitive, hardest to recruit for. We'd like to work with you and use the collective bargaining agreement and collaborate to make those types of positions filled, filled with good candidates. We want, with a proposal like this, though, to be sure that no one in our membership is left behind. The union advocates for all its members, both existing employees and newcomers. We have a duty to our members and to common sense to be sure that inequities are not created that will hurt existing employees. This proposal is a step in that direction. That's the last comment for me, Mr. Mayor. I would like to hear from the mayor and the council members, any questions that will help us prepare to win your support.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the governing body? I will start... I'm sorry. We'll start with Counselor Vihil Koppler.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask, when would these increases take effect?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, the raises would take effect in the next pay period following your positive vote. We do have a plan, which is before you, to spend $409,000 in the current fiscal year, which was what was allocated. So the... There would be pay for the hours worked already in the year that would be paid in lump sums to the members of our bargaining unit.
Okay. And then for the city manager, were these increases then in our next year's budget?
Mayor, Counselor, we did not discuss these increases as part of the budget, as far as I know.
Okay. And then, well, it's a recurring cost, so I guess somewhere there we go again. Okay. So then, the compensation plan overall for city employees, when Gary Bartlett mentioned that that was going to cost 2.1 million, so then I know that the collective bargaining process is different, but this is a classification study, so I would assume that whatever increases are given to employees there to bring them to midpoint... that whatever increases are given to employees there to bring them to midpoint would also affect the employees in the bargaining unit. Is that your understanding? I thought I read somewhere in here.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, this particular proposal is not related to any, any moves contemplated as a result of this compensation study. The union has seen no results or data from that study yet, so I'm unable to address directly the, the number I also heard of two-point-one million. I heard that from Mr. Bartlett the other night. We have not been in the loop on that yet.
Okay, so, my, my question, I guess, will stand in the future then, that is that, how will the compensation plan be applied to bargaining employees? Will those sources of funds just be brought to the table, or would indeed the whole classification system be implemented at once for all employees? That would be a question I would ask in the future. And then...
Pardon me. Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one other item for the Counselor. The only thing that comes to mind at the moment that's germane to your question, Counselor, is that if something takes place during the course of the current bargaining unit, so between now and the end of fiscal 2020, bargaining, bargaining unit, the bargaining agreement commits both parties to negotiate any increases in excess of, permanent increases in excess of two percent.
Okay, and then, one last question. In your written material, you, you mentioned that the, that management was supposed to come up with a pilot merit pay, in quotes, and to me, merit pay, although it may be different to others in this city, and, and I could be wrong, but merit pay is based on performance, and my sense from this, and I just want to make sure I understand it, is that since we didn't come up with a merit pay plan, presumably based on performance, then we are turning this into equity, where you're just going to award employees based on a sliding scale without regard to merit?
Mr. Mayor, and Counselor Vahill Copley, that's correct. I can't contemplate what sort of plan might have emerged from Mr. Snyder by mid-November. It was labeled a merit pay plan. Our plan is not based on our judgment of the merits or worthiness of individual employees. We're trying to balance out inequities that we see in the current compensation system.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Abeta?
Thank you. The, so the four hundred and nine thousand, was it contemplated to be a one-time lump sum that was distributed amongst the members, or was it something that was going to be added to their base, and so it would be something that we would have to absorb in the, each year's budget moving forward?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Abeta, strictly speaking, we're only asking your approval for, for an addition to salaries in fiscal 2018, but as would have been true of a merit pay plan, had one been presented, by its nature, this is a proposal to increase compensation permanently. For that reason, I spoke to your committee on Monday, that we would want to, if somebody asked, we'd want to budget the comparable amount in fiscal 2019 and 2020. For this year, we do have a proposal to spend all four hundred nine thousand dollars, so a portion of it goes to increase salaries according to that sliding scale, and a portion of it goes to pay the benefits that are still to be paid in the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Still staying under four hundred thousand.
But I, but there's a big difference between a one-time expenditure of four hundred and nine thousand from the current year budget to, I mean, we just, we just finished with a budget that didn't include this for the following fiscal year, so I, I don't know. That's, I guess, something we need to look at, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. Gino, I mean, this, this feels to me like we're negotiating a contract with AFSMI, and I know that, I don't doubt that their contract has a language that says that they can present an alternative plan to the governing body, but is that, is this something we should be really talking about and negotiating?
Mayor, Counselor Rivera, I've, I've reviewed the language that was, that was negotiated between the city and, and AFSMI, and just, just that basic language allows for AFSMI to come and make a presentation to you. That is, that is unusual. It is something different than, than you're normally used to, where all the negotiations take place at the table, and then management representatives bring it to you in executive session for discussion. However, this was negotiated and approved, so this is something that management agreed to, agreed to for the presentation to be made. They've asked for, for any responses. It's not necessarily negotiations at this point. It's informational so that you're aware of their proposal, and the next step will be necessary, as far as I understand, that, that management representatives and AFSMI representatives will sit down to do the negotiations, but it is approved for you to receive information directly from them, simply in this context.
Okay, and I see that it is informational only, but it does feel like we're sort of being put on the spot here, but, Mr. City Manager, it may be a little unfair to ask you, but do you know if there have been any verification of this plan here, and if the numbers match up?
Mayor, Counselor Rivera, I don't know if there's been verification, if the numbers match up. I do recognize the plan and the right to present this, at this meeting, from the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor? Other questions? Yes, Counselor Harris?
I just wanted to make a comment. I think, well, first of all, I appreciate the union bringing it forward. That's, that's your job, and I think it's appropriate, so, and there is certainly some things to talk about. I just wanted to clarify that in the conversations we had last year, yes, we discussed merit pay, and that we ended up with that as a title, but we did not come to any point of agreement where we're going to move to a merit pay system. So, I mean, you know, that title got attached to that pot of money, for good or bad, and I think you're appropriate for, you're correct in bringing it up, and I leave it to management to see how it's going to be handled over the, the remaining two years of the contract. But, yeah, just because it had the title, we, we did not agree that we're going to a merit pay system.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. So this four hundred and nine thousand is in this current year's budget, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Romero, that's correct.
And it is not in the budget that we've been working on for the last three days?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that would be correct. We did not budget for this money or for the subsequent increases if we increase somebody's base, base pay based upon this proposal. We did not put that into the budget.
And, the union is, I don't know what the right verb is, asking, thinking about, wanting us to use this money that's budgeted in this year to give one-time increases before the end of the fiscal year? Is that what I'm hearing?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, we are asking that this money be used for this compensation plan in this fiscal year. I did make the request on Monday at the Finance Committee that this be on your budgetary agenda for fiscal 19, so I just learned myself that it's not in there at present. This is a compensation proposal, so I'd be remiss in saying it's one-time. We'd probably rather have it for one time than not at all, but that's not our intention. Our intention is that this is a permanent adjustment to, for eight hundred employees.
Right, but that, but the, the intention is also that it would be, the amount that's budgeted for this year be used this year?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor?
Retroactively.
Yes, yes. We, we intend to use all four hundred nine thousand dollars of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Yes, Counselor?
Just, just a comment, and I too want to thank the union for doing what you're supposed to be doing, and really, when we had this discussion early on, we talked about giving the money to the union right away for increases, but at that time, the city manager wanted to wait and implement this merit-based program, which now has never been, been presented. And I remember at the time that there were some counselors, including myself, that just wanted to give the money right away and, and forget any discussion about the merit base, because the employees need it in now, and there were some, I think it was pretty split, that wanted to wait and see what the city manager had, so, just a little context there, but just wanted to fill everyone else in that maybe wasn't here.
Other comments? I would just add, first of all, my appreciation, I think, having looked at the proposal, the work that went into it is admirable, and the thought that went into it is admirable, and the level of detail is really a reflection of how hard you've worked on this, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the briefing tonight. If there are no other questions, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Very good. That was informational, and we will move from there. We move to item twelve, request to publish notice of public hearing on May 30.
So this is before you because the request to publish has not gone to any of the committees, so it's just a request to publish for May 30, not to discuss each of the items?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Roll call?
Councilor Vahill Copley?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Abeta?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Romero-Worth? Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. Item thirteen, request for approval of amendment number one to legal services agreement. This is to add to the contract with our interim city attorney. Would you like to speak to this?
Mayor, councilors, the, the original contract for my services had limiting terms of fifty hours per month, and no more than twenty hours per week. The amendment that's before you today increases the, the monthly limit and places no weekly limit. It's just to build a cushion in, in case there are blips that, that require additional hours. As of 3:00 PM today, the 25th of the month, I billed fifty-four hours, and that really runs, not from the first week of April, but from the second week of April. And now, there have been high-profile issues that I've been working on, along with, working with and managing staff, and so that has caused some spikes. We don't know if we anticipate any spikes. So eighty hours is an upper limit, but hopefully, that won't be something we'll need in the future, but it's a cushion. This is not a, a base billing where I'm billing eighty hours. I'm billing each hour at a time. However, there are months, there, there may be times between now and June 15 that will require spikes. Hopefully not.
Are there questions? Comments? Counselor Harris?
Yes, so, yes, Mr. Zamora, we had this, I had a little bit of a conversation about this during budget hearings. I don't know if everybody was present who's not on the Finance Committee, but I just wanted, my concern, as you know, and really, it was triggered in part Monday night at Public Works, where the city attorney's office was not represented, and we really had to postpone something, and, you know, it's not, this was not a critical item, but we just need to keep things moving forward, and so I just wanted confirmation the other day that, in fact, you would be able to work with staff, just in a managerial level, provide the direction that they need as part of this increased hours. I know that you've, like you say, you've had some flashpoints. Hopefully, things will settle down a little bit, and they kind of just get to the, kind of, I don't know if routine is the right word for a city, any city attorney office, but anyways, that was my concern the other day. I support this amendment for that reason, to make sure that we have that oversight, that provide the direction to the city attorneys, off, staff, that, that I think they deserve and need, quite frankly.
Mayor, Counselor, your, your point is well-taken from our conversation the, the other day, and it highlighted a need not simply to be reactionary to, to the spikes in need for my presence, but also to be a little bit proactive, to schedule regular office hours in the city attorney's office, so that I can meet with staff, so I can review the, the agendas for the various committees, and ensure coverage, and in an instance like what took place on Monday, when coverage wasn't available, or when the primary person wasn't available, ensuring that a backup is in that person's place, so that we don't have that occur again.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions? Have we got a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you very much. Can we call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Abeta?
Yes.
Councilor Harris?
Yes.
Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Romero-Worth?
Yes.
Councilor Vahill Copley?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved.
Item number fourteen, request for approval of appointment of Eric Littenberg as temporary city manager. Are there questions? Yes, Counselor Abeta?
Thank you, Mayor. I support this, and I've made a comment to you the other day, that the NFL draft is Thursday night, tomorrow night, and there's a reason the draft isn't the day after the Super Bowl, just like there's a reason you shouldn't be appointing people the day after the election, but I do think it is time, though, that you start appointing people to your administration, and I hope that you and Mr. Littenberg, our manager, can start that process, because I think we heard during the hearings for the budget, a lot of people in acting roles, a lot of vacancies, so I support this, and I hope that, again, it'll lead to us starting to make rule appointments to some of these key areas of the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rivera?
I echo what Counselor Abeta said, and hope that we can start with, there's a lot of mid-level positions, really administrative assistants that are exempt employees, that have been here for many years, that are kind of frustrated with whether they're going to have a job or not. They're, they're truly afraid, so I hope we can deal with them quickly and, and move with the others as we need to, so, but based on what happened these last three days with the budget, I think Mr. Littenberg is a great choice, so.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Vahill Copley?
Mr. Mayor, I support this as well. If this is going to be the sole document implementing this, I would suggest an acceptance signature from Mr. Littenberg, since it guarantees him he can turn to his former job as a fire chief.
Point well taken. Thank you. Any other comments? Please, Counselor.
Just, just to echo what Counselor Abeta and Rivera have already said, as you know, during the budget hearings, I asked each department director to identify by positions those that are temporary and interim, or acting, or whatever title was assigned to them, and so, you know, we got over the budget hearings, that's good, it took a lot of attention... And so, you know, we got over the budget hearings, that's good, it took a lot of attention for everybody, and just like the conversation with our acting City Attorney and being able to work with staff, I think, hopefully, you and your management team will be able to concentrate on some of the positions that we know need to be filled just as soon as possible. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Other comments? I echo the interest in moving quickly and efficiently, and since we've established that the job of filling these positions belongs, with the exception of three, to the City Manager, I'm looking forward to having the City Manager in a position to make those decisions and move quickly, efficiently, effectively, and with good judgment, and I trust our temporary City Manager's judgment. I think he's acquitted himself with extraordinary grace and intelligence under relatively adverse circumstances. We put him, I put him in a position where in the middle of budget hearings, he was asked to step up and take on that responsibility, and I want to applaud the job he's done over the last three days to step into that role and to work with the council members, with the committee, and frankly, with me, in a way that reflects his real strong character and his ability to deal with uncertain and unpredictable situations. So I appreciate your encouragement, and I share your interest in moving quickly and filling the jobs, and beginning to build this team that we're all looking forward to. Move for approval. Could we call the roll, please?
Counselor Abeta?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Romero-Worth?
Counselor Vialcopter?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes, thank you. Matters from the City Manager. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was wondering why I didn't get a vote on that last issue. No, no matters from me.
All right, very well. From the City Attorney?
No matters from the City Attorney.
From the City Clerk?
I have none, thank you.
Communications from the governing body. Counselor Harris?
Yeah, I'd like to provide my first directive to the City Manager. And, you know, this is old business, truly, and it has to do with the airport and wastewater plant being on airport property. We do have an appraisal in hand, I'm told, I've not seen it. You know, there's a time sensitivity to any appraisal, and so if you would, I think you're going to need to pull together our acting Airport Manager, Mr. Tiavo, Mr. Jones, our acting Public Utilities Director, and probably because the police are there as well, you might as well roll them in because of their presence on airport property. Maybe you want to break it up separately, that'd be up to you, do police separate from wastewater, but Acting Chief Padilla also may be there. But if you would, put that on your list, and let's see if we can't move that forward gradually, because it has been talked about for quite some time. Thank you.
Noted.
That's it.
Counselor Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, we just approved this tonight, but by state law, we have to do this every 30 days, so to make it through the committee process and be ready for the May 30 City Council, it has to be introduced again now. So, resolution proclaiming severe extreme drought conditions may exist in the City of Santa Fe imposing fire restrictions, restricting the sailor use of fireworks within the City of Santa Fe, and prohibiting other fire hazard activities. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Villarreal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to give you all an update on the, I don't know if all of you are aware, but we have a working group, an Affordable Housing Working Group, that is an offshoot of the Community Development Commission, and we were charged with looking at a community engagement process that would really be looking at not just city properties, but what would be criteria that we'd look at when we look at our own properties and other properties for future development. And it's been, you know, a small group, it's really just made up of community members from various backgrounds, not necessarily from, with a housing background, but it has been fruitful. But I think what we've discovered in our meetings is that there also needs to be an update to the ENN process, and so that's like something in the back of our mind that we want to tackle. But I think first and foremost, we wanted to make sure that we have some kind of formulation of an open house or a community engagement process that can highlight some of the properties the city owns, but also what maybe we have out there right now that has consisted of affordable housing, where we've done partnerships with the private sector and nonprofit sector. This is just kind of my goal, but we're still working out that, and I'm just part of the process, and there's other people, and they have different opinions about it. But I did want to let you know that we are working on that. And also, recently, at a CDC meeting, we had, we presented a draft of the 2018 and 20, 2018 through 2022 Consolidated Plan, and I suggest that some of you look at that because it does provide kind of just a scope of the things that we want to focus on in terms of housing. And there's a lot of information there, and it's still in draft form, and we still have to present it, but we did have an open house, and Councilwoman Rometta Worth was there, and she got it, you know, I think she was able to hear some of our meeting. The other thing that was presented that I think all of us should probably either, I'm going to try to get the slides up, I'll try to send it to you, but it was information and data on our housing needs, and it created a, not created, but it showed a different picture than what we've been hearing all the time, so I think it would be important for all of us to see that. And I also think it would be important for the Mayor's Task Force on Housing to see that, because there's some information there that's, I think, important, as they look forward of, look forward to some of the things that they want to tackle in the first 90 days, as well as reading the Consolidated Plan and the highlights, because there's some good information there that I don't think we always get to digest in meetings like this, and it's very dense, but it does help to give you a snapshot of the housing needs that we have in Santa Fe. And of course, we always talk about rentals, but there's all these other populations that we tend to forget about, and so I'll just leave it at that. And you can find the draft on our website, so I would encourage you to look at that, and I will try to get the slides from the consultants that gave us the data on housing needs in Santa Fe, and demographics, too, it was very interesting, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Lindell?
On that point, Counselor Villarreal, could you go ahead and send that out to the councilors?
Yes.
Or if you want to distribute it through the City Manager, he could then distribute it to all of us.
Yes. I will send you the slides that they presented, and then also the link to the consolidated plans that you can find on the website, and the public can find that on the website as well, to take a look at it.
Thank you. Counselor Vialcopter?
Are we still on matters?
We are on matters. Communications.
I just want to say that I was a contributor to the landfill this weekend, there's past weekend, and I was so impressed, it's the second time I've done the, I even forgot what we call it, the Amnesty Day, where you dump everything and hope you never see it again. And, you know, I went before, and there was such a long line, I think two years ago or so, and, but still, it was managed very well, and this year, it was just phenomenal. There was, there was no line, it was organized perfectly, the Director of SWAMA was there, and he was part of the process, but I was greeted just very, very customer service friendly, and I know, Mayor, that is on your watch that you like to emphasize, and it was just a great, great event for the community, and I believe, I think somebody already wrote a letter to the editor, or they commented on Facebook, I can't remember which, but it was truly recognized, and I'd just like to give accolades to the staff out there, they did a wonderful job.
Thank you very much. It is very much on my radar screen. Counselor Abeta, do you have any items? I have one that I'd like to call attention to. It's a resolution supporting National Dump the Pump Day on June 21, and providing free fares on our transit system for that one day. This is a national event designed to call attention to alternatives to the automobile, and a resolution putting the City of Santa Fe on record as supporting it, and also as not collecting fares for that one day. It's about a $1,100 item, and it would be covered from the marketing budget, because I think this is essentially a very positive marketing message from the city to, that indicates our support, and I'm introducing that resolution for your consideration. Mr. City Attorney? Are we going to executive session at this point?
Mayor, members of the governing body, we have no executive session items for this evening.
Thought we did, okay. Then we're adjourned until 7:00, at which point we will resume. Thank you.
Yes.
And with that, I love that. It makes such a nice sound. All right, it is seven oh three and we are back in session. And we will begin with petition, oh, roll call first.
Mayor Weber.
Here.
Councilor Veta.
Here.
Councilor Harris. Councilor Ives. Excuse, Councilor Lindell. Councilor Rivera.
Here.
Councilor Romero Worth.
Here.
Councilor V. Hill Copley.
Here.
Councilor V. Ariel. Do you have a quorum, President Mayor?
Thank you very much. Item F is petitions from the floor and we will accept those now. We will, City Clerk, if you will be the timekeeper, we'll have a two-minute comment from the floor and then I think that people will line up. We'll be able to move through the petitions with some clarity and efficiency and we'll be listening with great attention. Please.
My name is Lucinda V. Hill. I am a third or fourth generation Santa Fe decena. People ask me how old I am and I joke, I say I'm 300 years old, don't I look young for my age? Anyway, congratulations to the new faces in the City Council. Joanne and I went to high school together and it's great to see you guys up there and all the best to you from the very start. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity. I wanted to ask you, have you ever been on Old House Highway? It has a view of the city of Santa Fe, it looks like an opal. An opal was discovered in the seed pit of the hackberry tree, thanks to the lab work of Pope Jarheen, which is the book I'm reading now, Lab Girl, I'm always reading books. Anyway, our city of holy faith is like an opal, precious and full of everyday people that are amazing. I've been present at the last two water talks at the Collected Works Book Store. The first talk with Andrew Pastore, I raised my hand eagerly and they ignored me and so I told him I would give them the questions I had there to the City Council of Santa Fe. So that's what I'm doing. On the way out, Alan asked me what my questions were and I said I'd present them to the city. In Flint, Michigan, they found lead in the water from piping that traveled through the piping in the water. My question is, is there something in the periodic table that could remedy that? I've been told that water, that water that sits in a glass container in the sun, in a clear glass container, the sun will purify it of the chlorine inside it. The Onimus River, the gold mine spill, is there a filter that has a magnetic ability to absorb the mineral gold? Those are my two questions that day. We not, we may not find out the answers, but I can ponder and so I present those questions to you. Two years ago, the biodynamic world came to the convention center to share their knowledge. There was 800 people from all over the world here at our high school gymnasium, the old mini gymnasium. I was thrilled and excited, I flew by the seat of my pants that day to just be a part of it. One of them noted that there were square flower beds on the rooftop of the convention center, which I did not know about and so I went and I investigated that and I spoke with Beverly Spears last year when she was here doing her book signing on the Churches of Mexico and she said that I had to talk to somebody in the city called Randy.
Yep. I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Anyway, I don't know if this project would be something that the city would be interested in, but I just thought I'd throw it out there. Anyway, it's, I'm always trying to fill space in a beautiful way. And I'm gonna leave you with a song because our former mayor Javier, he'd always leave people with a song, so I want them to play on Que Suave. I love you more today than yesterday, but not as much as tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, that's lovely. Can you please pull, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilors. My name is Judith Podmore and I live in the northern neighborhood and I'd like to just mention some problems focusing on Estancia del Norte, which is a new development that is above where I live. So there are several important problems that have been raised by neighborhoods surrounding this proposed development. It's on the hill, property to the left of where one hikes or drives up Artist Road from Bishop's Lodge Road. In 1995, I believe, a study reported that the land was deemed unstable for housing development. I've attended a number of meetings regarding the proposed development. Neighbors are especially concerned about the stability of this particular land. People living in the area, myself included, have tales of floodwater and silt blocking the streets in the lower areas and almost entering homes. This has resulted in us making a phone call and the city coming with bulldozers and what have you to, to collect the silt. This is a cost to the city and a cost to the taxpayer and we think it's likely to get worse with the development despite the fact that there has been mediation up in the area, but it hasn't worked. Also, I'm concerned about the road junction at Calle Marisol, which will undoubtedly also be problematic. During summer tourist season and ski season, the traffic load is exceptionally high at certain times of the day and making turns onto Artist Road is likely to be very difficult. I feel the proposed subdivision will just add to this difficulty. A percentage of the development is required for low-income housing. The plan calls five of them to be separated from the main development. Why can't they be included amongst the expensive houses? Why separate them? I call this discrimination. The area in question surrounds our neighborhoods that already experience a high degree of rentals and this leads to reduced sense of community. This northern city development is likely to continue the pattern of part-time ownership with possible monthly rentals. Yet another problem. I ask the city to review the plan more carefully, bear in mind neighbor concerns, there are other areas that could be used for infill for much-needed homes and thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Mary Lopez Wilson and I live at 602 Sunset Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and the Colosita Neighborhood Association in regards to the proposed 49-unit subdivision on Hyde Park Road called Estancia del Norte. This property's had quite a history, which I feel it's important to share. In 1995, the City Council denied a development on this very site. The senior city engineer stated that the Los Vinos project was not suitable for building on the steep, rugged, and eroding terrain. In 1998, the developer in retaliation initiated a multimillion-dollar slap suit against two members of our neighborhood association as well as three city councilors for alleged violations of the developers' constitutional and civil rights. SLAP stands for Strategic Litigation Against Public Participation. The lawsuit lasted five years, 10 experts provided professional consultation, environmental biologists, hydrologists, soil scientists, 14 professionals provided statements and/or testimonies, architects, archaeological historians, soil conservationists. 1,400 petition signatures were presented and recorded. In 2000, the U.S. District Court of New Mexico ruled in favor of the plaintiff, the lawsuit was dropped, and the land was deemed not suitable for building. Fast forward to current years, Almoda subdivision, nine lots approved in 2016, it's northeast adjacent to this development. Hacienda de Marisol, eight lots, approved in 2016, it's south adjacent to this development. Estancia del Norte, 49 lots, preliminary plans were just approved by the planning commission and they'll be before you in a few weeks. We've been reviewing the drawings, submittals, and minutes for Estancia del Norte project. Our neighborhood association is seeking clarification on a few items. We ask of you, the governing body, to support our efforts in seeking answers to these critical questions before considering approval of these plans. Our report will be completed by May 3rd, it will be concise and to the point, to be respectful of everyone's time. Thank you, Mayor Weber and City Councilors.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Ms. Lindell and Vane, is it all right if you use first names? Is that okay? And Carol Michael, yes. Joanne?
I'm Richard Polacy and I've lived here for, oh, 55 or 60 years in Santa Fe, so I'm a common law native. I'm here to
I'm here to bring to the table something that myself and Elaine Coleman came through with last year for the month of June. Last year was June 17th and that is the Take Your Kids for a Hike Day. And so we're going to do it again and hopefully with the city council's backing and interest this year. So the day is the 16th of June. And again, that's a Saturday and the day before Father's Day, as it was last year. We met, we met with, oh, yeah, Tammy McClellan at the Children's Museum. And it was interesting because she tuned in and said, you know, we'd like to be a part of that too and maybe we can help work out a route that we could advise people that, you know, there'd be supervision there, of course. So that's it and I just hope that you'll bring this forth. Peter, you're not here. Peter's not here. Well, he was the co-sponsor of the resolution. You were the sponsor, I know, yes. And so I want to thank the council for what you did last year and hope we can look forward to the second annual Take Your Kids for a Hike Day. Thank you.
Thank you, that's my son's birthday, I'll look forward to participating.
Oh, wow. Oh, Alan, that's great.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Dame Correto, 997, Gaias de Raza. During the break, Mayor, I put two letters on your desk because I don't have enough copies for everybody. I do have a copy for Carl's, so it'll begin in your minutes. Okay, the first item I want to bring up is, I want to remind the mayor, I have requested a meeting with him concerning the guidelines for our committee, Mayor Committee on Disability, of which I'm a plan review supervisor. And the second thing is, is a letter that was brought up at our recent committee meeting concerning parking for the disabled. It's getting out, out to the disregard for, and in that, the lady, the presenter, was asking for help. One item brought up was, a possible solution would be have the parking director draft the ordinance for our committee to review and your city attorney to pass it for legal advice. So all the requirements for disabled parking could be corrected. Notice I use the term disabled parking or parking for the disabled. I don't use handicap parking. Handicap is an insulting term, just like the term for blacks, you don't use, never. Thank you.
Thank you for your statement. Other petitions from the floor? Okay. Thank you. Item G, appointments. We have no appointments. Item H, public hearings. Request from National Dance Institute of New Mexico for a waiver of the 300-foot location restriction and approval to allow the dispensing consumption of alcohol beverages at the NDI dance barns.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and present just a quick and then, you're fine, you can sit there. So Mayor and Councilors, this request is, as the mayor stated, for a waiver of the 300-foot location restriction. This would be for the NDI dance barns and the date would be May 12th of 2018. The alcohol service would be from 4:00 to 11:00 p.m. The location is within 300 feet of Aspen Community Magnet School at 450 La Madera and la Comunidad de los Niños at 1121 Alto Street. There are letters in your packet of no opposition from Lisa Sullivan, she's the general counsel for Santa Fe Public Schools, and also from Joelyn Katnak with PMS Children's Services. Or she's the manager, excuse me, at Comunidad de los Niños.
Thank you.
Do you need me to state my name and address as well? Felicia Ponca, 4110 West Alameda, here in Santa Fe. Perfect. Mayor? Councilors, thank you so much. This is, I'm standing here, I always get so nervous doing this, I don't know why, but we do it every year and it's such an honor to stand up here to represent such an amazing organization, the National Dance Institute. And the funds that we raise from this event, which will be on May 12th, help over 10,000 children and 2,000 of those within our city limits. So I just ask for your approval and I hope that you will support the non-opposition for our event.
Thank you. Is there a public comment? People wish to testify on this matter? Is there comment from the governing body? Is there a motion? Close the public comment.
Motion to approve.
Take it.
All right, and then this, are we roll calling or we?
We'll do roll call.
We're roll calling.
Councilor Harris.
Let's roll call.
You got it. Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Councilor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Beeta?
Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has been approved.
Thank you so much.
We move to item two. City Clerk, do you want to identify the item?
I shall. So, Mayor and Councilors, this request is for a waiver of the 300-foot location restriction and this would be to allow the dispensing and consumption of alcohol at Canyon Road Contemporary, which is at 622 Canyon Road. This is for the grand reopening event, this will be on Friday, May 11th. Their alcohol service will be from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The location is within 300 feet of the Santa Fe Monthly Meeting of Friends, which is at 630 Canyon Road. There is a letter of no opposition from the Santa Fe Monthly Meeting of Friends in your packet and as I stated, that's of no opposition.
Hello, everybody. I'm Nancy We Matt and I'm owner of Canyon Road Contemporary Art. We were for 37 years at 403 Canyon Road and have just moved up to 622 Canyon Road to a larger space after 37 years. So we are wanting to host a grand reopening event for our 32 artists and, and I'm sure it's to be expected too that a lot of galleries do host these kinds of events in addition to some other events during the season. We are within 300 feet of the Meeting of Friends and I've spoken with them and they have no opposition to this, so I respectfully submit that we are able to proceed with this grand reopening.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this matter? Public hearing is open. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Item H3, City Clerk, do you want to lead us into this?
Now it is. They're requesting a restaurant liquor license, which is also known as a beer and wine license, and it will have on-premise consumption and patio service. Location of Mangiamo Pronto is at 228 Old Santa Fe Trail, Unit B. So this location is within 300 feet of the Loretto Chapel, however, waiver is not required because the Loretto Chapel has been designated as a historical site by the Cultural Properties Committee and does not have at this time a regular congregation. There are staff reports in your packet regarding litter noise and traffic and we do request that as a condition of approval that this applicant comply with all fire, building, and land use code requirements.
Would you like to speak to this matter?
Briefly, yes. Sam Gerberding, I live at 809 Rio Vista Street. I just ask that you give consideration to granting Walters Empire LLC a beer and wine license for Mangiamo Pronto. It's a very simple, nice corner cafe, we're just hoping to stay in survival by being able to provide that little extra that can bring people to our doors.
Thank you.
With respect, then, thank you very much.
Any questions? Is there any public testimony on this matter? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve, but I would also like to ask the applicant the name of the, it's Walters Empire LLC?
Yes.
Do I know Walter?
Yes, you do.
I thought so. Walter has four legs and he used to walk on a very regular basis on Gonzalez Road.
He's a shrewd businessman.
He's, I'm telling you, I am all in for this.
I only, I only hope that knowing that won't color your vote in any particular way.
Motion to enthusiastically approve.
Second.
Yes, Counselor.
Undiscussion. Is this a brand-new license or is it being transferred?
It will be a brand-new license, although the restaurant existed for many years under previous ownership.
And do you know where the license is coming from?
If I could, so beer and wine licenses are untransferable and that's why it's before you, but there, there are not transfers.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Can we call the roll?
You bet. Councilor Romero Worth?
Yes.
Councilor V. Hill Copley?
Yes.
Councilor Villarreal?
Yes.
Councilor Beeta?
Yes.
Councilor Harris? Councilor Lindell?
Yes.
Councilor Rivera?
Yes.
And Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you, motion has been approved.
Thank you very much. I'll see you at Mangiamo.
Thank you.
With Walter.
And with that, we stand adjourned. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.